All right, we're gonna start off the new year. Biloxi City Council meeting Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023, 6:00 p.m. meeting, first meeting of the year. We're gonna start off with a prayer by myself and a pledge allegiance by Dr. Tisdale. Would you please stand? All right. I need a motion on the agenda.
I move it.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence.
Second.
Second, second by Doc, Dr. Tisdale. Was it you?
That'll do.
Dr. Tisdale. Any questions on the agenda? All in favor? Case six zero, motion carry. Presentation agenda, mayor's report.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Want to welcome everyone and have a happy, I hope you had a happy new year and we look forward to a great 2023. I think we're off to a good start and I want to thank the council for getting through 2022 and now we're 2023 and ready to rock and roll. I do. Yeah, that concludes my report.
All right, all right, all right. Okay, Joey, we want to start you off with the new year.
Well, we are closing out the holidays come Thursday. We're flipping the night light for 12th night and we're returning into Mardi Gras. You know, this town likes to party. Christmas, Thanksgiving, Mardi Gras, Easter, you name it, we love doing that.
Every day is a holiday.
That's gonna be good for us. Thursday, they're all gonna want to appear at City Hall at 6:30. Y'all be here.
Thursday.
Thursday.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Newton. No report? Okay, Dr. Tisdale?
Just a point of order, Mr. President. We, under the mayor's report, he's. There are a couple of things under your section of the agenda, the card, Mr. Mormon.
Oh, yeah, that, you're right, you're right. I'm glad you said that. I do, let me unhook my closer of the reports. So I would like to ask the council to spread the expenses of Biloxi travel.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Can we go back, Mr. President? Can we go back after we've already went forward?
We technically, we can't, but we, we're gonna shift it up right. All right, Dr. Tisdale?
Oh, yeah, yeah, wait, I can finish that. Thomas Mormon, who's gonna come up and give us a report on, on the oyster progress we have, I'm sorry.
I couldn't let it pass. I couldn't let it pass because I like oysters.
We do too. Thank you. I almost forgot you.
All right, thank you all for letting me join your agenda today. My name is Tom Mormon. I work for the Nature Conservancy in Mississippi. The Nature Conservancy is a nonprofit organization with programs in all 50 states. In Mississippi, our main office is in Madison, but we also have a coastal program to which I am the director of. I wanted to update you all or give you an overview of a project that we have in progress related to the recycling of oyster shells. So I'm gonna just go through some quick points and if you have any questions, please let me know. Our project is funded through the Restore Council. It's a project awarded to the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality. The Nature Conservancy is a sub-award to DEQ on this project. Oyster shell recycling is simply trying to intercept oyster shells that would otherwise go to a landfill and put them to use into conservation or restoration activities. So in the case of this project, we're looking at intercepting oyster shells that would be discarded from restaurants, potentially end up in a landfill, but collecting those and storing those so that they can be used for some sort of restoration activities down the road. This project is being conducted in two phases. The first part, we've actually finished. We did a economic feasibility study. We wanted to look at the cost of running a program in the state of Mississippi, but we also wanted to look at the quantity of oyster shells that would potentially be out there from restaurants. So it doesn't make sense if those things don't line up appropriately. So we have concluded that feasibility study. We looked at, again, the costs involved in running a program, the benefits of having that program. So what are the benefits from nature that can be derived from restoring oysters and also what is the potential value of that material being used for restoration? We currently have a project advisory team consisting of at least 15 members. We have participation and input from restaurants, state government, nonprofits, and we have some academic members on the team as well. We were able to identify 85 restaurants in South Mississippi that sell oysters. Fifty-one of them sell them on the half shell. So those are the oysters that we would actually be looking to collect the shells from. We would consider them allies or potential advocates for a program to recycle oyster shells. We completed a survey of those restaurants in which 26 of them participated. So that's more than a 50% return and that's, that's not half bad. We were pretty happy with that result. So of those 26 restaurants, annually, they saw approximately 3.15 million customers. They shucked about 2.5 million oysters and they all indicated that they would be willing to participate in a shell recycling program if one were made available at no cost. In Biloxi, we identified 18 restaurants that sell oysters on the half shell. In Bay St. Louis, for example, we identified eight, Gulfport eight, and Ocean Springs, six were our top municipalities. Extrapolating from that survey and bringing that up to, to the 51 restaurants, we estimated annually that approximately five million oysters are shucked annually in these restaurants. And that amount is approximately 1,200 cubic yards of material or 1.6 million pounds of oyster shell. So the first part of the survey was to figure out, is there enough shell to make a project or program worthwhile? And I, I think just by that number alone, we, we think there is enough material to be collected that is worth going after. Based on the results of this study, we've been approved to move on to phase two, which is simply the collection phase of the project. So that's where we're at this point. We've concluded our, our economic study. We're looking to move on to 2023 into a collection phase for approximately two years. So the, the targets for this collection phases are pretty modest, but they're fairly reasonable. We hope to enroll up to 10 to 20 restaurants by the end of the pilot, hopefully landing about 500 cubic yards or 600,000, 600,000 pounds of material annually. Just to put it in perspective, the other four Gulf states all have oyster shell recycling programs and the volume of shell that we would expect to collect is consistent or in line with the program that the Alabama Coastal Foundation has been running since 2016. So we were kinda comparable to equivalent size state and area in what we would expect to get. We are currently working on drafting a request for contracts related to a collection contractor. So that would be a waste management company of some variety to pick up the material and also a restaurant coordinator contractor. We are working on details to establish a curing site to actually store the shell. So you can't just collect it and put it back out, you have to cure it for about six months. Once those items are finalized, we can begin to enroll restaurants and begin shell collection, hopefully late March, early April. So all that contracting process takes a while. People have to review it and approve it and everything we do goes through the Department of Environmental Quality as well. So there are lots of folks who, who get, put their stamp of approval on the work that we're doing, thankfully. With oyster shell recycling, there is a very clear appeal of connecting people to oysters. Oysters are a big part of the coast culture and sense of place for Mississippi. An oyster shell recycling program can help highlight the value of that resource as a fishery and habitat that connects a harvester to a restaurant, to the consumer. And the potential volume of that shell also makes this worthwhile as far as the amount of material to collect in pursuit of restoration. And that would close the loop from harvester to restaurant to consumer and put that material back into the water. In the end, what we're hoping to establish is a program that would essentially make eating an oyster a literal act of conservation.
All right. I would like to ask and add a little bit of Biloxi's support to you. We have a little bit of a history in oyster shells and oysters around here and, you know, there's a house, I encourage you to look at, that's completely made of oyster shell blocks, that's on Lee Street, Corner of Lee Street and Howard Avenue. And if you look around, anywhere there's a fig tree, oyster shells helped fertilize that. So there's a tremendous history and under the ground, as our engineering staff will tell you, over the 300-year history of, oyster shells were a big part of everything. So we would offer our support to any, you know, and encourage you to look at the history of some of the things, the, the, the whole process that has taken place over our 300-year history. So thank you, we'll help you in any way we can.
Thank you, Mayor. Oysters absolutely are a big part of, of the culture here on the coast and it's very appropriate that my first stop is here in Biloxi, which, you know, you all know is seafood capital of the world and very key to the development of this area. So thank you for your time. I do have a one-page summary of the bullet points. I emailed it, but I don't know if it got to y'all. I can leave it behind.
We'll get it to you. Thank you, Tom, I appreciate the work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mormon, does that conclude your report?
My report.
Okay, great.
One more time.
Okay, Dr. Tisdale?
Yes, just one thing. So I'm, I'm driving down Kivit and I hang a left to come east and I go by the old train depot. And there's the Amtrak station or whatever, I don't know if you've seen that.
Platform.
Right. And I'm, and I'm thinking, might have been two years ago, we were looking at a grant and we were gonna construct something due north of the CTA on the, the east side of Raynor. And then we rescinded that. That was probably, what, about a year ago, nine months ago, I think, Mike?
We rescinded it because they said they wanted to do the design and construction.
All along the coast.
Right.
All along the coast.
So I've had people say, why in the world did y'all put that there? Well, it's not us, it's.
Amtrak.
Amtrak and the Railway Commission. Is there, is there anything that can be done?
What we, what we need to do now is we need to look at the area and see where the pathways would be that people would move and, and to get striped, the, put striping down and blinking lights or anything we could do to, and let people move safely from CTA parking lot to the train.
It just, I, I mean, it's their property, I guess they can do what they want and they did. I'd be, I would be surprised, given my experience and your experience with CSX, if somebody called and said, hey, we've got this money, where would you like it? My guess is they didn't contact us, they just, it just popped up there like a mushroom after a summer rain.
Well, we knew, we knew we were out of the game when, when we returned our grant money, when they told us they were gonna do the design and they were gonna do the construction. And then, then the conversation stopped at that point.
Well, it may be in the, maybe in the future, we have a couple of banner years, but it would just be so nice to get off a platform as originally intended there, north of the CTA intermodal location, just, you know.
It was a half a million dollars.
We can enhance it for sure.
Well, Christmas is coming up.
But, but, but that's one of the things that they suggested is when, when, that, that there are things we could do to improve the lighting, the visibility, the, you know, the way to the trap, pathway that people will take from parking and so forth. Those are things we could do now.
Well, and I'm not knocking the administration, I just know that sometimes it's like pulling teeth when, when you deal with some entities and my experience has been that they're one of those entities. That's all, thank you.
That's it, Dr. Tisdale? Mr. Glavine?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to, first of all, start off my report on what a great weekend of football during the bowl games, watching LSU, Mayor. I know that's your, one of your favorite teams do their thing and Mississippi State, you know, unveiled a special logo on their helmets to honor Coach Leach, which was very moving and, and they won their game and what a game by Tulane to upset the USC Trojans by one point. I think it was what, 46, 45, something like that. And then switch gears to last night. It brings us to reality when you see a young man that his heart stopped while being hit in the Bills and Bengals game last night. And our prayers go out to him, they revived him on the field, which is encouraging. And so we all pray for a recovery from him. So football is nice, but, you know, life is certainly precious and, and worth more than a football game. Getting to my report, my award, I'm gonna focus again on Hickman. I want to thank Director Creel. I know we've been dealing with a lot of things out there and your quick response is certainly appreciated. There was a lot of rain last couple of days and there's a perception with the field, they got a proper field permit, the owners of the property, but there's the perception that that's causing some of the runoff and flooding. Director Creel assured me along with our floodplain manager that that isn't the case, it's, it's about the same as it's been. However, they did point out that some of the ditches are shallow, which is causing probably more of an overflow. I don't know how much of a right of way we have, but I would ask for a commitment from maybe our engineer, Public Works, and others to take a look at that and if it's simply making those ditches deeper to capture more of the runoff, to shed that water off without getting on the other adjacent properties, I really would appreciate some attention to that if possible. On another note, Supervisor Connie Rocco is, is drawing up some cost estimates on some of the road repairs and she'll have that to us shortly before the, there's a timeframe on submitting that or we're gonna miss it for this fiscal year, this actual fiscal year that we're in and we may have to wait longer. So hopefully she can get that up, up to us as quickly as she can. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman Glavine. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'd like to wish everyone a happy new year. Also, I'd like to thank Mike Hossley. We had that heavy rain last week and we had a couple of things pop up out in Wool Market and he got right on it and got them taken care of. So give him and his team a shout out for that. Also, you know, I know that we allocated money for some contractual services on some things dealing with Public Works and we just have a lot of ditches that need to be cleaned that haven't been cleaned in years. That, that anytime we have a rain, any type of significant rain, it's causing issues. So if we can somehow use some of that contractual services money that we took out of the Public Works budget, if we could use some of it for that, that would be great. Chief Miller, Administration, I don't know. I have gotten probably 25 calls and emails on this duck hunting stuff in Eagle Point. One lady called me and multiple times today, her home was hit. She has a metal roof, lives directly on the water and she can look from her porch and see these guys on the water hunting and they're shooting and the, the pellets from the, the shells are hitting her home. And I have another guy that I believe some of the officers have been out to their house and his wife has severe PTSD, PTSD, I'm sorry, and had to take her to the hospital today. And basically, he said if we don't do something, he's going to. And, 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 and so it's not one person calling, it's multiple, multiple people calling, emailing. And they say it's, it's had, the, the one lady said that you can see them every morning from her porch. So she said if, all we've gotta do is go out there to her house and, and we can identify where they're at. But, you know, I, I don't know what the answer is, but, but I have gotten multiple, multiple calls and complaints today especially. And, and I guess when the season first starts opening or something, I guess it's just on the weekends and now it's open to seven days a week. And so they, they basically said it's every day from like six o'clock in the morning until about 8:30 and it's non-stop. And so I don't know what the answer is, I don't know. I know that in the past, we've put stuff out on Facebook, we put stuff in the B News that goes out, but if there's any type of patrol or something that we can do to help these people, I'd greatly appreciate it. Okay, all right, I'll get those to you. And I have a couple of emails that I just got as well. And I'll get you all that information. Okay, and then the last thing, Mayor or Mike, I got an email last night from Pam Barlow, Ward Seven, a tree committee member, and her terms up and I guess she doesn't want to go back onto the committee. So I guess we'll have to do another Ward Seven appointment and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, I wanted, the mayor, Mike, I wanted y'all to explain what happened on Forest Avenue with the cave-in. See how I could tell the people, want to know the update and what's going on with that.
Yeah, Michael had the details and I think Cecilia has had some interviews with Vectrus, I think, they're responsible for a water line and a very old water line that goes from Keisler across.
DeSoto Street.
DeSoto and then all the way to Harrison Court. It's probably 60 years old, that line?
At least.
And again, it's responsibilities ties Keisler in with their housing. Right now, the fam camp is going on there, but it's an old line. It was, I think, Bill of Raid indicated there was an issue and they're supposedly gonna take care of it for tomorrow morning. But again, that was Keisler's very old line that tied the, the property right by the I-110 and Keegan's Bayou Inn. The housing now, it's gonna be the fam camp, I think the new fam camp there. And again, anyway, that was the story on that.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. I want to read some from Councilman Demming who could not be here. Councilman Demming had an emergency. He's out in northeast, been driving all night in order to make it here in time to attend a meeting. Unfortunately, he will not be able to make it in time and he sends his regrets for not being here. That concludes my report. Move on to a public agenda, citizen comments, citizen comments, so a total of 45 minutes, three minutes per person strictly enforced. Is there anyone on my left who'd like to come up and speak?
Jerry.
Please sign in.
Make sure the microphone.
Please sign in.
Tracy Smith, 237 Main Street, Ward Two. I come here as a private citizen, taxpayer, residential and commercial property owner. And I've also come here to formally ask for Mr. Gans' resignation. The events of the past few months has broken all trust that our community has in him. He's been unavailable for comment, unwilling to meet with the public, unwilling to answer questions. I personally have no confidence in him. And just so that you guys know, he has no connection to the community that he serves. So when he is up here supposedly representing us, he is only representing himself. I am very disappointed in him in the Martin Luther King fiasco. The way he conducted himself on Rip Daniels was an embarrassment to my community. I know Alitra Nunnely personally, she is a great woman and she is a volunteer. I think he owes her an apology. At the very least, Mr. Gans can create some sort of public forum at one of the churches or at the community center where he can take questions from the public and explain his position to us. I have a few questions. One question is, how can him becoming a Republican benefit a community that is 90% Democrat? Also, he has 18 months left before the next election comes. Personally, I think that that is a form of extortion for my community because he does not serve our, our, our interests. The next question is, what is his plan of action for the next 18 months concerning your community? How are you gonna serve us? The last question is, are you gonna run for reelection? If you run for reelection as a Republican in Ward Two, you will not win. The last two things that I brought up make you a lame duck candidate. And I cannot consciously see paying your salary for another 18 months when you do not represent your community. Once again, if you have a public forum and address some of these concerns with us, some opinions may change. Mine won't. I think you should resign. Let someone with some different personal views, different, different views and people who we choose that can put input and be accepted because the things that we bring to him do not translate to this city hall and to that council seat. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Anyone else on my left? Anyone else on my left? Anyone on the right?
My name's Catherine Walker. I'm on the agenda for Resolution G and this is just to let you know that I'm here if you have any questions. I believe you have everything.
Which one?
Do I need to say all that again?
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else on my right? Anyone else on my right? Okay, now to the back of the room. Anyone in the very back of the room? Okay, none answering? Consider citizen comments closed. Oh, you got one? Okay, well, I didn't hear you, I called twice.
I just had to get enough nerve to get up and I guess that's all I needed, was a little nerve. I, my name is Angela Bell, 206 Brown Street. And I was just wondering, Mr. Gans, can you tell me why you became a Republican? Angela Bell, 206 Brown Street, my name is, and I just wanted to know why, how you, how you became a Republican. I know you probably have thought about it real hard and all that good stuff like that, but I just wonder.
Okay, this is not a question and answer, sir, but I will, I will call you and I'll give you the answer.
And I definitely want to hear your comments, trust me on that one. I want to hear your comment because I just can't, just can't.
Okay. Anyone else on the back? Okay, you want a comment?
I'm Lenora Ralph Walton, a citizen of Biloxi. My question would be to the city, Ward Two, in reference to a matter that we have in our neighborhood, is this the time to something to be addressed in reference to the roads and sinkholes?
Please.
Okay. In the subdivision called St. Paul subdivision, there seems to be some serious drainage or sinkholes such as you have seen on the TV with DeSoto Road, okay? Also seen on Bellman, right there by the Greenwich Community Center. So in our subdivision, and it appears to be from one end to the other, they have some serious issues going on. They seem as though that they may be looking at the matter. I've looked at it for a couple of years where they've come in and almost like every three or four months, they come in, they mark areas showing where this is, where the problem is. And also stated that they would have someone come out and view the matter as an emergency because what is going on is you got sinkholes. I happened, my husband was mowing our yard, going on a normal area where we usually go. All of a sudden, hmm, you in the hole. What is this? We called the city out, oh, there's damage to the pipe here. Okay, I got a neighbor right next door, she's got a center hole too, about this big. Go to the next neighborhood over there, they got a center hole too. Want to know that this address. Want to know that this address of this matter is being brought to the attention at this time because we do see that there's a lot of repair roads going on. And they state that the matters that are being addressed are from the Point Cadet up to the Howard Avenue area. Also, you see where the construction is going down by the boulevard area that's beginning to construct. So my concern would be is, has anyone addressed this subdivision? Even though I spoke to one of your representatives here stating that it's been brought to the attention over and over, but nothing has been done. But there's some serious conditions going on in our yard. We have children in our neighborhood. We are family. We are elderly people, majority of us in that subdivision. We're going out there trying to maintain our property, but yet still, we got some serious work going on. I'd just like to know, is there anything in your agenda, which I have not seen anything in the newsletter, representing that particular area? Everything is all around that area.
Ms. Walton, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you again, and I will, I'll get you that update that you're asking for. I've spoken to many people in your area, so I'll get you that update.
Thank you very much.
Last call? Okay, we're going to move on from public agenda to the public agenda. Ordinance reading, first reading, ordinance A, Michelle.
Ordinance to amend section ten five dash two, the Sherman v. Canon, Back Bay Fish and Dock Burden Rate Schedule, and ten five dash two dash three, the Biloxi Commercial Fish and Dock Burden Rate Schedule.
Need a motion on it?
I'll move it.
Moving by Mr. Lawrence, and then second, second by Mr. Glavine, that's the first reading. Ordinance B, first reading. Michelle?
Ordinance to approve a zoning map amendment to authorize a change in zoning district classification from its present zoning of R M H, residential manufactured home, and R B, regional business, to N B, neighborhood business for a parcel of land presently identified as one, two, three, zero, old highway sixty-seven.
Need a motion on B? You want to make it? Motion by Mr. Barrett, second.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Glavine, that's also the first reading. Can I move on to ordinance C, Michelle?
Ordinance to amend the code of ordinance, section fifteen dash one dash two, to address the compensation schedule and pay rates.
That was moved by Mr. Lawrence and second by Mr. Glavine. Mr. Lawrence?
I'm going to move it to Paul Tisdale. He has some questions he'd like to ask about that. Paul?
Thank you, George. Yeah, Mike, I have several questions about this, just in studying this compensation schedule and comparing the titles, those job titles or job positions in what's proposed compared to what we've typically had or historically had. Removing seventy-three titled positions.
That's wrong.
Which I think is a good thing.
Fifty-three.
Only fifty-three, that's good. That's fine, and I'm in favor because we had, I don't know, we got six hundred people working, and like, three hundred had a different title, but that's, I'm okay with that. We also have nine newly titled positions that are being added. Is that correct?
Any new title, the job, the new title, yes, that's correct.
I think there are nine.
The point, though, that I'd like to make is that when we have a new title and it's a new description, it goes to the Civil Service Commission. Civil Service Commission reviews the new job description.
Okay, and I assume that's been done for all nine of these positions?
I believe so. I know that in many of the meetings over the years, this goes on through the year. It's not like a once-a-year thing.
And I know that some of them have. I didn't keep track of them. I'm just noting there are nine new titled positions. Excuse me.
This was an effort to clean up. You talk historically.
Right.
Historically, we've not done a very good job of cleaning up the job descriptions.
I'm all.
Eighty-three jobs that are job descriptions that have nobody in them.
Right, I'm all for that. I'm not objecting. I have some questions about this procedurally, though. Also, with the compensation schedule, we're deleting several pay grades. Pay grade ten, pay grade eleven, which were entry pay grade levels, and then pay grades thirty-five to forty-four, which were upper end. A lot of those, nothing more than placeholders in that compensation schedule. So.
We really don't need a historical site anymore. We really don't need a museum manager anymore, et cetera, et cetera.
I know.
That's some of the fifty-three.
I got you. I'm right there with you. I don't have a problem, so far. This is great, but here's what I'm getting at. Some, a lot of these positions have been moved from one pay grade to another. And that's because the pay bands, A, each grade is five percent higher than the previous grade, and the maximum salary in that pay grade is forty percent, okay? So what, correct me if I'm wrong, what that's allowed the administration to do is say, well, we're giving folks raises, but we're going to move some to a different pay grade, right?
We're going to change some.
And the ordinance allows that.
Well.
The mayor shall compile all such changes annually and then present such changes to the city council for consideration and amendment of this chapter. This is what we're doing, is we're cleaning this up and presenting it to you.
Okay. Every individual city employee will get a five percent pay raise, is that correct? That's my understanding.
Minus the serving officers.
It may be more.
Minus the sworn officers, but at least five, at least five percent. Okay. And we have some folks who work for the city. I'm thinking of judges, prosecutors, I don't know, public defenders. They're not quote-unquote employees, correct?
That's right.
They don't get the benefits, but they are not proposed for pay raises. Or can we anticipate a proposal for an increase for those positions?
We can anticipate one.
Well, I know, but I'm anticipating Ward Seven Tree Committee appointment, you know.
There's some restructuring of everything when it comes to those kinds of things. I think we need to take a look at it. Just not, you know, our need was to get our six hundred and four employees on a scale that is competitive to everyone, and I think that's what we did. From last year to this year, we bumped pretty well with a long-range plan of what we had talked about, of something every year, you know, given the situation, the compensation range, and, you know, each one of us, we have some ability to do that without having to re-change, you know, compensations every year, compensation schedule every year. So I think that's a five-year kind of look ahead is why the result of that matrix of five percent and forty percent.
Thank you. So, Mr. Leonard, going back to what you had mentioned earlier with the civil service, looking at these new job titles and descriptions and so forth, and you had read what the ordinance says, and looking through the civil service rules and regulations, on page fourteen, there are a couple of pages I'm going to read from. This is under the plan, which would be the compensation plan. It says, "Such plan shall include a list of the titles of the classes to which all positions have been allocated."
That was a door.
Hadn't had this much fun since New Year's Eve. Okay. "Such plan shall include a list of the titles of the classes to which all positions have been allocated and a written description for each class, setting forth the title of the class, the nature of the work performed, examples of duties, desirable knowledge, abilities and skills, training and experience requirements, and licenses or certificates desired or required." So, and I think as you had mentioned earlier with the job descriptions, I'm assuming all that is done by the Civil Service Commission members, the commissioners, get a copy of all that stuff to review.
Review, but not approve.
Then we go to page fifteen. It says, "Amendments to Classification Plan: Allocation and Reallocation of New Positions." "It shall be solely within the authority and discretion of the appointing authority," that's us, "to determine what position shall be created, filled, or abolished, and to determine when to do so. In carrying out this, in carrying out its decision to create, fill, or abolish a position, however, the appointing authority shall do so in compliance with these rules and regulations, with the civil service rules and regulations." And here's my concern. The next paragraph says, "When a new position is created," we've got nine of them, "the appointing authority shall, by working, submit to the commission a recommendation in writing of the classification with a comprehensive statement of describing in detail the duties and responsibilities of such position." Has that been done?
Let me say this before that goes on. I think in reality, the jobs, we didn't create a new position where a new person who has never done this particular job description, I think we just renamed it in the ways. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mike. I think, no, we just redesigned a more descriptive title that goes along with the job. You know, if we'd have created a position like CIO or something like that, that would be my view of a new position that we never had. I think the jobs, the descriptions that are new are filled by the people who have been doing the job anyhow with the change in description, if that makes sense. I don't want you perplexed now.
No.
You understand what I'm saying? There's no new jobs and no new people doing a new job.
Perplex comes after amazed. I'm in the post-perplexment phase.
Okay.
But my point being, there's a process here. I don't know if we have followed that process. The fact that we have positions or position titles moved from one pay grade to another doesn't affect anybody's pay. But that's part of the schedule that I'm making the assumption, my belief is, that the Civil Service Commission has to approve. We got the attorney right here.
Wrong.
Who might have an opinion.
I'll give you an example of a new job description. That is, the evidence technician job, which has, the description changed because it went from a sworn officer to a civil position. And that was, that change in the job description was briefed to the City Civil Service Commission. As an example of one that over the year, my assumption is, without checking, that all, any new job descriptions have been approved by the, have been seen by the Civil Service Commission. But this business of changing the job rates and moving jobs between, that's clearly defined in the section fifteen dash one dash six, allocation of positions, as something that the mayor and the directors do.
And I'm not questioning that. My question pertains to the involvement of the Civil Service Commission approving, reviewing at least, and approving the revised schedule based on the change in pay grades, not in pay, but for those different jobs for different pay grades. So I'm happy to let the attorney, I appreciate your engagement, but, Mr. Abid?
It's the first I've heard of any of this, so I'd have to look at what you're talking about.
Let me say this on behalf. If it hasn't been approved, it will be. Again, it's important that we get this thing so we can deliver some, this compensation at least looked at with the condition that we will review and bring up. If there's any questionable situation with the existing compensation, we've got to roll for January fourth with a compensation schedule that we can go forward with. But I can give you, you know, assurance that those things, if it has not been done, will be done. Perplexed?
I am because it took so long to get committee appointments. Okay?
I'm perplexed, okay.
All right, now, that being the case, if every employee is going to get a five percent pay raise.
At least a five percent.
At least a five percent pay raise, and I'm no accountant, but in looking at the figures of what was budgeted for salaries this year, and the amount of money that's being put into each department's budget for a salary increase, comes closer in general to four percent than it does to five percent. In some instances, it could be six and a quarter percent. In some instances, let me finish, let me finish. In some instances, I don't have enough information. For example, take the police department. We have sworn officers, and they got a raise previously, but now we have all the other employees.
And they got a five percent. I literally wrote the program that did it, so I can tell you that, you know, five percent was the base. We didn't go less than five percent.
Who are looking at a five percent increase, but I don't know how many of those non-sworn police department employees are in each department, so I can't calculate those figures.
About a hundred that are non-sworn offices as far as PD. Literally, you know, I ran the code to do this, so from a programmatic standpoint, five percent is a figure, not four percent.
So based on my figures, until I can have some time to discuss with whoever wants to discuss it, I can't support what's before us tonight.
Well, again, you know, January.
I'm just one vote, and our employees certainly deserve it.
Well, again, this is much ado about some things that are minor in delivering what we need to deliver. And it's very important to me, I, in the past months, getting to where we are today, and we've got this thing where it's ready to rock and roll for January fourth. If not, we're going to carry it on to the fifteenth, but, you know, pay period's starting on the fourth. So it's really important, and like I said, I can't express it any better. If there is a problem with civil service or some of your concerns, we will correct it to your satisfaction. And again, I've been involved with this five percent big time. And I can tell you, we, you know, we had a hundred and nineteen sworn offices and arrested everybody else in the department, got the five percent. Same thing with the fire department. That's the biggest hitters, Public Works, all of them, and then everybody else. So that's pretty much the way it is.
I'm happy to compare my figures to your figures in the subsequent days, and you can tell me where my errors are, if I've made an error.
I'm happy to do that.
I've always known you to be happy. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Glavine?
Thank you, Mr. President. While it took a long time for us to get here today with this second reading of this ordinance, we all wanted to get here and get a raise for all of our employees of some level. Some of us wanted more, some of us are satisfied with the five percent. I do want to commend the mayor. He's taken a lot of heat on dragging his feet. I don't know if he drug his feet. I think he took the time to make sure, like he just said, that this is going to work. And you spent the right amount of time, in my opinion, to make sure we could do this and still run the other operations of the city effectively. I don't know if I'd go out on a limb promising or implying that we can do additional increases. We can't guarantee that, and I don't think anybody's guaranteeing that. We certainly would look at it if we possibly could as we are custodians of taxpayers' money to compensate city employees and run the business of the city, the sinkholes that come up, the streets, the lights, the drainage, all that stuff that we got to take care of. So I'm going to support this. I don't know, I don't know of any reason to delay it. If there are some technicalities or formalities, I'm sure we can address that going forward if somebody wants to raise that question, but I'm going to vote for it to make sure it can go forward.
Let me, if you don't mind, let me back up a wee bit, and I think where we may share some perplexity is that, if you're talking about comparing the journal entry that was made for three-quarters of the annual salary, that's maybe where your data may be not adding up. So your budget entry that was asked, your budget entry that was passed to carry from January through the rest of the pay periods in FY will not, you know, add up to four percent annually. It is, you know, so basically, I think that's where the rub is.
You might be, you might be correct. I don't recall factoring that in. I don't recall factoring that in, but.
Thank, thank you, guys.
But I'd, I'd still like to see more of a commitment to a one and a quarter percent increase in each of the four subsequent years, and I'd like to also see a, a more comprehensive and more transparent compensation salary schedule, which we could discuss during our budgeting workshops this summer.
Thank you, Dr. Tisdale.
Thank you.
We need to go ahead and move on. Mr. Barrett?
I'm good now. Just real quick, just like everyone else said, I think that everyone on the council and the administration wanted to get this done, just had to make sure that everything matched up and, and worked out long-term. Like Kenny said, some of us did want more, but I'm not going to do anything to hold that back at all because our employees do deserve a raise. I commend the mayor and his administration for working to, to get something for everyone. The only question that I have, and, and I think it was answered in everything that Paul said, but I had someone contact me and they basically, I guess, because their grade was eliminated, they went down in grade, but that will not affect their pay.
Right.
They will still receive the five percent. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
That's a possibility, because of the forty percent gap from the bottom and, and where the floor is in each, each grade, that's a possibility.
Okay, yeah, and that's all.
But nobody's going down in salary.
Okay, all right, and that's all that I have. I'm glad that our employees, you know, are able to get this raise, and hopefully we can do it, you know, the one, one and a quarter, one and a half percent every year.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Mr. Lawrence?
Hi, Mayor. This is the way we had, five percent increase minimum, correct?
That's it.
Guaranteed.
That's it.
All right. Thirteen sixty-five minimum wage.
Thirteen sixty-five, that was more than five percent, that's eight percent. Went from twelve fifty.
We need to change that. So minimum wage is going to be thirteen sixty-five.
That's what it is, yeah.
That is now.
That's what it's going to be if you approve this compensation schedule.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, we've been fighting for this too long not to approve it. We got problems like that, we'll adjust it. You know, I don't know, Peter, somebody think we didn't do right with the civil service, would that affect anything? If we pass this tonight, that's not going to kill the deal, is it?
No, no. The Civil Service Commission does not approve our rates.
The position, that, that, with Paul, we're talking about the certain thing that had to be approved to the civil service.
Wrong.
That's all, not position, not the title, not the stuff you make, that's different. I'm just making sure that if we pass it, we can put it in effect. That's what I'm asking, Peter.
What he's, what he's talking about, what he's talking about the civil service, somebody had an objection to the way things worked out, didn't feel like they were getting their five percent. They would have an avenue to not only take that to the administration, but also to the civil service. So I think that's their role in this as far as the, the civil service part of it.
Yeah, I was just talking about the procedures before that, so that's not really going to.
No.
Y'all want to put this in effect.
Compensation schedule is, is part of our ordinances, and it's part of the, just like any other ordinance passed by the governing authorities, and the civil service wouldn't have any sort of a veto power or anything like that over.
Yeah, I know, we are the legislative body, we set the laws, we do.
Yes.
Not anybody else, not the planning commission, not civil service, anybody else, we do. I just want to make sure we do it procedurally correct, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, and also just wanted to mention that Councilman Deming said he was in support of it. With that being said, I'm going to call for the question, all in favor? Okay, we got five and one against, Dr. Tisdale? With Councilman Deming absent.
We know the significance of that vote. We now, we now have to wait thirty days.
Yeah.
So you can pass that along to your employees and your wards that that pay raise is not coming this month.
Absolutely.
I'd like to retort to that, please. If we'd have done this when we were looking at all our budget workshops for this year's budget, all right, we, we went through this same scenario, we went through this same scenario a year ago at the last minute, the twelfth hour, literally.
This is all avoidable, thank you.
Dr. Tisdale, we, we got to, are you going, are you changing your vote, Dr. Tisdale?
Not in the least, not in the least.
Okay, so motion carries, this, this discussion is over. Okay, we're going to move on to resolutions, resolutions D.
Resolution granting conditional use approval to authorize the establishment of a plaza to include the, a convenience store with gas sales, liquor store, and restaurant upon a vacant parcel of land presently identified as nineteen fifty-one Pops Ferry Road.
Need a motion to put it on the table?
I would like to move it.
Moved by Mr. Glavine, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barrett. Mr. Glavine?
Yep. Jerry, give us some background.
This is a, this is a proposed convenience store to go in at the corner of Pops Ferry and Jam Lane. Mr. Delano got the zoning changed a few years ago for this purpose, to, to have a convenience store located there. It'll have some retail, it'll have a convenience store, and a liquor store, and the reason it's conditional use is because they're doing gas sales there, but it's a perfect location for a convenience store.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I totally agree with its suitability for this purpose, and I would ask for your support.
Thank you. Mr. Barrett?
I have nothing more.
Anyone else? Dr. Tisdale?
Yeah, Jerry, there was a strip of land during the planning commission hearing, I think it was resolved probably before the end of the day, I don't know, during that meeting, but there was some question about a strip of land and the zoning for that land, but that, that has been resolved, it's part of this parcel, correct?
It was actually corrected, it was, it showed up on our GIS system that a small strip of this property was still zoned multifamily residential. We went back and pulled the file, and for some reason, it just didn't get over into the GIS system, but it has been corrected, yes.
The other thing was, we didn't get, usually we get a transcript of the planning commission for these cases, but this one was cut short. Do you recall what the vote was by the commission?
It was nine to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, that's good. Anyone else? Call for a question, all in favor of D? Six, zero, motion carries. Number E, Michelle?
Resolution granting conditional use approval to authorize an existing single-family residence to be utilized as a short-term rental for property located within an RM thirty high-density multifamily zoning and identified as two sixty-nine Fayard Street.
I'll move that. I need a second.
Second.
Second by, Ms. Newman. Second by Ms. Newman, and I think this is, I think this is idea, the raise, I know them very well, they have their plans laid out, what they're going to do, and this is idea for what we need. Ms. Newman? Sounds good. Anyone else?
Yeah, man, I just.
Mr. Lawrence?
Last time I did that with you, Felix, they sold a house the week later, so I just can't, this is strictly a single-family residence, I just can't vote that in. I think we need to get off the short-term rentals anyway, but that's just me, but I just can't support it.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah.
Dr. Tisdale?
Oh, let's see here. So Jerry, the Fayard Street, half of it, I think, is zoned for business, the north half of that block, and the south half is zoned RM twenty or thirty.
Yes, sir.
However, it's noted in the transcript that actually most of those homes, not all of them, but most of those homes are single-family residential.
That's correct, yes.
And that of the homes that are there now, a, a lot of them are not occupied.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay, and how many short-term rentals do we have permitted? You could hazard a guess.
Three, three hundred and ninety-five that have been approved, but three hundred and sixty-five that actually have licenses. It's just that the, the people who got the others approved have not come in and gotten a license on them.
Right, so there are some in the pipeline, so to speak, but right now would be at little less than four hundred, if everybody was permitted, that was approved tomorrow.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, I noticed that Pastor Chris Chan is limiting their short-term rentals to a hundred and fifty, to see what's on the market. I, I think that'd be a good idea, don't know what the magic figure would be, probably if we were to bring something to council, probably be four fifty or five hundred. But do you know what Ocean Springs is? Are they still capped?
The last I heard, it was somewhere in the seventies, that they had put a limit of like seventy-five or seventy-seven on the number that they were going to approve. That was the last thing I heard.
Yeah, I think originally they had a cap of twenty-five, and, and they decided to approve some additional ones. I, I sort of feel like, I get emotional when I'm thinking about Mr. Lawrence. I, I, I feel as Mr. Lawrence does, I, I just think that, and again, once you start approving these individual residences for short-term rentals, it's kind of hard not to approve a short-term rental on that block. So, and I have concerns about intrusions into the neighborhoods. Includes my comments, thank you.
Yeah, and, and, okay, Mr. Glavine?
A couple of things, and, and I just want to reiterate this, when, when I'm weighing whether to support it or not, first of all, the councilman in this ward, how does he or she feel? You've, you've stated your feelings, Gines, and then the second thing, how does the surrounding area residents and business and community, how do they feel about it? I've, I hear no objection, no one's come to council at this meeting and voiced any, any, any opposition to this, so I, I will support it.
Thank you, and just to top on it, it's a single house that's out there, isolated by itself, so this is perfect for it. Okay, with that being said, I'm going to go ahead and call for the question, all in favor? Okay, one, two, three, four, and against, two, one, two, Mr. Lawrence and Dr. Tisdale.
Resolution granting a final subdivision plat approval for Cavett Cottage's subdivision, a non-lit, nine-lot, single-family residential subdivision for property currently identified as lots nine through twenty-six of Cavett Business Park subdivision.
Okay, thank you, I'll move that myself.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Lawrence. I think this is perfect for the community, building up, bringing in housing within the Ward Two community. Mr. Lawrence?
Jerry, on the map that we have here, they show, they listed on Anglada, but that's only like nine lots, and they said nine and twenty-six, so the rest of them sits on Cavett Street?
They're all actually on Cavett Street, they run between Cavett Street and Anglada, and they're going to build these eight houses, it's nine lots, but they're leaving the large one vacant right now until they decide what to do with it, but they're going to build these eight houses facing Cavett Street.
Okay, because the thing is, they showed the, Anglada, they showed the big lot, but they're not putting anything in. So everything we face in Cavett.
Yes, sir.
These sizes of lots are roughly six thousand, four thousand, forty-five hundred, stuff like that, right? Now, I think, and you know what's really nice about this? No way in the sight they ask for short-term rentals. Isn't amazing?
But they can do it because it's a used by.
I'm just saying, they have not done it, I know you'll get them to do it.
It's a used by right, and that's all.
I'm going to vote for it, but if we're short-term rental, we're going to go to war.
Okay.
We don't need to live in a city blocks on short-term rental. Y'all got to get that in your head. That does not benefit this town at all. But I'm going to support this because I think this is what we ought to be doing.
Any other questions from any council members? Dr. Tisdale, of course?
Yes, I'm trying to have a question for every item on the agenda tonight. That ninth lot, Jerry, all of that is zoned?
RB.
RB, and, okay, that's all I wanted to know. So it could be a business that goes in there, it could be another Cavett.
And, and I believe that's the reason they're holding it vacant right now, they intend to put a business there, it's important.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Call for the question, all in favor? Okay, six, zero, motion carries. Okay, we're going to go G, Michelle?
Resolution to grant a final subdivision plat approval for an eleven-lot, single-family subdivision, replat of lot thirty-two of Savannah Estates subdivision.
I'll move it, and just with the notation, Mr. Lawrence, this is not short-term rental.
I'll second it.
Moved by Mr. Glavine, second by Dr. Tisdale. Any questions, Mr. Glavine?
Yeah, listen, I, I, man, I love this little subdivision, several years ago, it only had a couple houses, a couple spec houses on it, and now it has six or seven houses to add, and eleven more houses on some, developing some lots, and the infrastructure is coming along nicely on both corners. It's just a special little subdivision that's, that's really growing. I know Ms. Walker came up earlier to announce herself, Ms. Walker, I'd just like to present the opportunity, if you'd like to tell us any, anything else about this development, or, or if you're okay with it, we'll move on. Okay, fair enough, fair enough, thank you, thank you, Ms. Walker.
Okay, anyone else?
I have nothing.
Nothing else, Dr. Tisdale? Nothing on this one?
They go, don't encourage me.
Okay, I'm going to call.
Short-term rental, we in good shape.
I'm going to call for the question, all in favor? Six, zero, motion carry, I need a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll move.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Glavine. George, you got anything?
On D, you putting down concrete pavers, is that in front of the harbor? What is, what are you actually doing there? We installing concrete pavers, they said.
D is in dog? Are we saying D is in dog?
Yeah, D, like in Delta.
It's an area down in the harbor, they want to put pavers down so we can repair it later on. So instead of paving it, instead of putting concrete back.
Primarily, yeah, primarily both things. Yes, yeah.
Does that make sense, Councilman?
Say again.
An area down in the harbor that, in order to, in order to allow us to do maintenance later, we want to put pavers down that can be, be removed, and we have to deal with water lines and so forth. Just an, an area rather than, that needs to be repaired, and rather than concreting it and paving it over, we're going to put pavers.
Why are we doing it on C, the?
Anything to add?
No.
On, on the, the naditorium roof, we said it's like nine thousand, that seems to be pretty cheap, what, what y'all do to the roof, just repair the hole in, or was it leaking?
Yeah, I think so.
I haven't seen that site, that's what that's been described to me.
You anything on naditorium roof? I'm sure just a repair.
Yeah.
Not that much money.
No, I was going to say, I was, if it had to be something, that's why that was wrong with it, you know? On the rest of the stuff, we should have done with anything else.
Not much there.
On, Mike, on A, on the boat rental, is this a new boat moving into an old slot or what? The excursion boat?
Yeah, excursion.
No, it's a, it's an existing charter boat that wants to, they wanted to do excursions half the year when they're not doing charters. So it's sort of, what we did is we split the difference between the charter boat rate and the excursion boat rate. So it's just a special lease for them, since he wants to start doing excursions on the charter boat.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Ms., Ms. Newman? Dr. Tisdale?
Yes, Mike, on that, on that same item, this is the charter versus the excursion. It, it says that overnight stays are prohibited, who, who enforces that? How does?
Frederick. Frederick and Larry at the port, if somebody, if somebody's trying to do it as a short-term rental.
Well, it's, it's, it's just that, and I'm wondering, this is, we've never had a contract like this before, this is somewhat precedent setting.
Charter boats can't, can't be liverboards, as I understand it, right? Right, Councilman Lawrence? So he couldn't be a liverboard anyway, whether he was excursion or the charter boat.
All right, thank you.
Okay, that's all, Dr. Tisdale?
That's it.
Mr. Glavine?
I have nothing.
Nothing, Mr. Barrett?
I have nothing.
And I also have nothing. Okay, I'm going to call for the question, and I'll take any exceptions, all in favor? Six, zero?
None.
None? Ms. Newman? None. Dr. Tisdale, none. Mr. Glavine, none. And Mr. Barrett?
I have nothing.
None. Consent agenda passes. Code enforcement, Mr. Creel.
Okay. First item on the agenda, item A, Teresa B. Avan, six fifty, six fifty-four Haven Drive, that case has been resolved. Item B, John E. and Rita L. Brown, eight nine.
Item B, John E. and Rita L. Brown, 894 Rustwood Drive, that property is still in violation.
Okay, hold on.
Wait.
Okay.
It's Robert's ward.
Okay, I'll see him, I'll see him.
Yep.
Okay, Mr. Johnny, Rita, representative, would you please?
Tonight, right before I came here.
Okay. Okay, please address the council. You have any comments you want to make? No, right there on, on the mic.
No.
Yeah, speaking of microphone.
I got, I'm sorry. Pictures right before I came here, it's all resolved, I believe.
You got it resolved? Okay, well, what we'll do, I'll tell you what we'll do, we'll, we'll get, grant you 30 days, and if you can prove, if, take care of that with Mr. Creel, it'll, it'll be resolved, okay?
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, I'll, I'll make that motion to give you 30 days.
Okay.
Second. All in favor, council? Six, zero, motion carry. So you got 30 days, work it out with Mr. Creel and get it taken care of.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Item C, Carla Gentry and Bradley Johnson, 6091 Mason Road, this property's still in violation.
Okay, is there anyone here representing Carla Gentry and Bradley Johnson?
Mr. President, I'd, I'd like to request 30 days. This is a brand-new street in my ward, Ward Six, a new portion of Ward Six. It's been paved recently, and I had reached out and have not been able to connect. I did talk to a relative and said she would be available later this week, and I was trying to get to her before we got to, to this point today, but I would ask just for 30 days.
Okay, and second, moved by Mr. Glavine, second by Mr. Lawrence. Any questions? All in favor? Six, zero, motion carry, 30 days.
Case number D, Michael L. Grimes, 1616 Sunset Boulevard, this property has been resolved. Item E, Gulf Coast Jeeps, Zero Pops Ferry Road, this case is still in violation.
It's in my ward. It's in my ward.
Okay, is there anyone representing Gulf Coast Jeeps? Anyone representing Gulf Coast Jeeps? Consider that matter closed.
Item F, Wetlands, 1031 Holdings LLC, 1744 Pass Road, this case has been resolved.
Thank you, Mr. Creel. I need a motion on the routine agenda.
I move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence, second by Dr. Tisdale. Any questions, Mr. Lawrence?
No question. I talked to Walt earlier, and he already received a $1.2 million check, so we in good shape with that.